Welcome to the December 5th workshop of the Orlando City Council. Today, we're going to have an update on our Link service. We'd like to bring in our various partners to update us on the status of what's going on in various organizations and of course, transportation and giving options to our residents is very important. Edward Johnson is our fairly new CEO at Links, less than a year, right? Six months? Something like that? So, I'd like to welcome Edward Johnson, who is the CEO of Links to our workshop. Edward?
Thank you, Mayor. And good point to meet with the commissioners. It is my pleasure to stand before you to give you an update. I had the opportunity to meet with most of you when I first came aboard, to be able to share with you that. I want to make sure that-
Links gets in front of you to talk about what you're getting for the money that you're investing into Links. And so, working with Mr. Brooks and Mayor Dyer, they said that we could come out this morning to give you a brief update on where Links, what Links has been doing over the past six months and what we're looking to move forward with over in the next few months. But it certainly is a pleasure to be back at Links. I was gone for three years and over in Atlanta, but prior to that, I worked for Links for thirteen years in a number of positions. Again, I did say that my presentation will be brief. I do have a number of slides, but I won't spend too much time on them.
Ed, can you turn that mic up?
Okay.
Talk a little louder, Ed.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Just real quickly, I think everybody knows our board, but this particular year, Mayor Theresa Jacobs serves as our chair and Commissioner Viviana Jainer, who's the chair of the Board of County Commissioners in Osceola County, is the vice chair. And I think you know the gentleman that's on the far right-hand side, then that would be our own Mayor Buddy Dyer. Some of the areas that we've focused our attention on over the past six months, number one starts with enhancing communications for the organization. Not only is it we're looking to enhance communications internally with all of our employees, helping them to understand not only about what our core mission is, but what the number of the business aspects that drive cost. How do we deal with those so we can make sure that we are operating efficiently and effectively? And one of the areas that I've paid particular attention to is from the healthcare costs, because many people don't understand, well, why are my rates going up? So, we're trying to do more educational understanding, what we can do to help keep those costs as low as possible. Also, we want to make sure that we're reaching out to our funding partners, making sure that our funding partners really understand what's going on with the organization. We don't want any surprises for you, and so, we want to make sure that we're giving you as up-to-date information as possible, but also just communicating throughout the community on the business of Links and what we're doing and how we're doing those various activities. Then next, we're focusing on how we can improve our operating efficiencies. We recognize that our on-time performance can be enhanced a lot better, not only on just fixed route, but our paratransit services as well. And we're going to talk a little bit about how we're going to deal with that momentarily. Then next, we're focusing on more partnerships. We've established a partnership with No Petro to provide CNG fueling for the buses, but we also have opportunities to work with the hospitals. As hospitals are starting to broaden their footprint and understanding that a lot of people are not accessing healthcare early enough, well, we should be partnering with the healthcare systems to see how our roots and their desire to expand services work with one another, so we can design routes that support those expansion activities. Also, we have the opportunity of working with our local colleges and universities. We've already had some conversations with the University of Central Florida as they're looking to build their downtown campus, talk about how we can help move people from their main campus to downtown Orlando. And also, working with the Central Florida Expressway Authority, had some very preliminary discussions on how we can have more of an east-west connectivity to move people into the downtown core area. Then next, we're focusing on improving the customer confidence in the system. I think one of the most heartbreaking things for me is when I'm driving down the road and I see someone standing at the stop and they're looking down the street to see when that bus is coming. What we've got to do is give our customers the right tools to help them to have a little bit more confidence that that vehicle is actually going to show up. And so, we want to deploy more technology into the system, and we want to talk about that a little later in this presentation. And then lastly, we want to increase the brand recognition and community involvement. One of the things that I have made aware to our leadership team is number one, we all have to utilize our services. If we're not utilizing our services, why should anyone else use it? But then, secondly, I'm asking all of our leadership team members to serve on community boards, so we can continue to get our message out into the community. Now, each one will have to serve on at least two boards. One board can be more of a little more cushiony position, however, one board that they sit on has to be a part of a human service agency, the very agencies who utilize or their clients utilize our services, because we need to be able to tell our story versus somebody else telling the story for us. Just real quick, and I won't go through a lot of this, but I wanted to say to you that we can track transit in Central Florida all the way back to the 1930s. Before transit became a part of a governmental entity, the Swope family actually operated public transit. And also, wanted to share with you that Links will be celebrating the establishment of the Links name into the family of services twenty-five years ago next year. So, we'll be celebrating the 25th anniversary of using the name Links next year. Just real quickly, we have our operating budget for this fiscal year is $129 million. Nearly sixty percent of that goes to cover our wages for our vehicle operators and technicians. And also, just wanted to make very clear that we only expend about less than 10% of our total budget on administrative costs. Now, how we derive of our revenues that cover our operating expenses, fifty percent of that is borne by the local governments, Orange, Osceola, and Seminole Counties and the city of Orlando, and the another 20% is derived from our passenger fares and another 23% is coming from the federal and state governments. Just real quickly about our ridership, as you can see, back in 2012, we really skyrocketed up from the previous years, but what we're recognizing, starting in fiscal year 2015 and 16, there's a decline. What we're trending is about a 7% decrease in ridership. A lot of that has to do with the reduction in cost in gasoline prices. In the transit arena, we tend to want to see the gas prices higher, because that encourages people to use public transit, but as gas prices began to drop, we also recognized a drop in our passenger utilization. This is something that we're seeing throughout the country. Just real quickly, as I mentioned about coming and speaking to you as a full body, we also made a promise to meet with the individual commissioners to talk about the services that are performed in each one of your districts. So, we will be coming back to you to talk a little bit more in detail about how the routes are performing in your particular areas. But a little while ago, I talked to you about partnerships. One of the partnerships that I think is really a grand opportunity for Links, and that was partnering with No Petro, who provides us with our CNG fueling for our buses. The organization, a year and a half to two years ago, decided to transition to compressed natural gas, which we should see a reduction in cost for our fuel. Right now, the cost is about similar, because gas prices are down pretty much, but however, as the gas prices go back to its normal levels or even higher, we should see about a dollar decrease in our cost for fueling. No Petro purchased the land directly behind our Links operations center. We entered into an agreement to purchase fuel from them between fifteen to twenty years, but also wanted to share with you that we do get a, an adder or retainer off of this relationship. So, we get about 85 cents off of fuel that is sold in the private sector for fueling. And we have agencies like Frito-Lay, Waste Pro, and Waste Management, who are buying fuel from No Petro, and so, we get a little cut off of that. The other thing is that what we like about it is very fuel, fast fueling. Some CNG stations don't fuel as fast, but when you think about having to fuel 300 buses a night, you've got to have a rapid fueling process. As always, Links is going to be a dedicated partner to Sun Rail. We believe that Links' role is to really support Sun Rail, feeding people into the spine that's already in place. We are proposing to Sun Rail to do a reevaluation of how we connect with Sun Rail right now. The way that it is structured at this point, we have extended existing routes to tie into the stations. We believe there's probably some, a little bit more effective way of doing first mile, last mile circulators that will help improve the funneling of people to the Sun Rail stations. And we're currently working to develop circulators for the Phase Two and continue to work with Sun Rail as they look at the extension on Phase Three out to the airport. Back in 2011, Links Board of Directors approved of a visioning plan. That visioning plan focused primarily on major corridors, on where we could place bus rapid transit or possibly light rail alignments. As you can see, there were about twenty-some-odd corridors that would be ripe for those rapid transit services. We want to now really build upon that and show how we fill in the gaps of transit throughout all of Central Florida, not just looking at the major corridors. And so, we're looking to work with the, with Cutter, the Center for Urban Research and Transportation, who is down in Tampa, to help us develop this visioning plan to show how we can partner more with Sun Rail, as well as with the Central Florida Expressway Authority, as I mentioned about having a lot more frequent east-west connectivity, as well as looking at how we can improve the frequency on a number of our routes. Number of our routes are at 30-minute frequencies, some at an hour frequency. That does not bode well if we want to be the best transit system in the country. And if we want to follow the moniker of the city, being a world-class city, then we've got to really enhance the mobility options through Links, and that is to make our services a lot more frequent. But until we can get to that point, we also need to take a look at what we have right now. I talked about the on-time performance earlier, that's an area that we need to improve upon. So, we're going to do a very detailed study, doing a route optimization analysis to understand where are our trouble spots throughout our particular routes, see how we can eliminate those routes, and understanding where we have routes that are running ahead of schedule, we can take that additional resource and put it into an area where we're having difficulty. So, we plan to just do a deep dive on how well each one of those routes are performing and come up with a scenario to make sure that they are delivering the level of services that we're telling the community that we're supposed to. There's nothing worse than to say on paper, this service is running every 30 minutes, but in actuality, it's running in 40 minutes. Another very important project that's on the table right now, we're kicking this project off this month, is the State Road 436 Corridor Study. This is going to be a really, really exciting project for this community, but also for Links, you know, when you start looking at around the country, there are agencies that are looking to do projects very similar to this, but this is really going to be a game-changer for this community. And we, like I said, we are looking to kick that project off this month, and with that study, it's going to cost us about $1.2 million to roll that out. Here's another area that I'm very proud of. Working with the city even before I left to go over to Atlanta, we started working on a limo business plan and an expansion program, because the, we want to be able to move people around downtown as much as possible, try to keep some of the single occupancy vehicles off of the roadway within the downtown core. Just a couple of years ago, excuse me, last year, we were able to do the Orange Line North Quarter Extension, and then, just last year, we opened up the Grapefruit Line that's going east-west, and we're currently under construction for the Lime Line that's going over into the Creative Village area. However, there's one other alignment that I do not have on here that we are really, really excited about being able to roll out someday soon, and that is running services from the Florida Hospital all the way down to Orlando Health, and that is going to be really exciting as well. But just to talk a little bit more about the Lime Line or the Paramore BRT construction project, I think you all understand all the merits that are around this and all the great things that's going to take place at Creative Village. That project now is, we're basically at substantial completion. There are still some items that we need to tidy up. There are a few activities that the Federal Transit Administration is asking us to do before we actually close out the project, but we do believe that we'll be able to make the ribbon cutting for February of next year. Here's an area that has caused us a lot of questioning, and we've had to do a lot of deep digging internally within the organization to deal with the concerns of the Rosemont Superstop. This has been a particular matter that has been going on for a number of years. We had the pleasure of meeting with Commissioner Stewart the other day to talk about how do we move forward with this? So, first and foremost, we need to make sure the area is, has been revitalized. The shelter itself has been there for a whole host of years, is somewhat in disrepair. The sidewalks need to be improved. We need to improve upon the lighting in that area. So, we're going to go ahead and start, we're bringing in a consultant to help us break out the costs to make those improvements, and then, we will put together a plan on how we can actually put that into implementation. But also, we are looking at, is there another location that we can put this type of envi- put this type of a superstop? What we would like to have is that the superstop is in a much open and airy area, where it gives a lot of visibility to it. Right now, it is in-between apartment complexes, and that's not the best solution for this type of operation that we're running. Another effort that we're working on is to purchase the land directly behind our Links Operations Center and adjacent to the No Petro facility, is buying additional property so we can locate more of an op-, more of our paratransit operations at this facility, as well as providing more parking for our employees. As we start looking at purchasing more articulated buses, the Links Operations Center, which was designed to accommodate 340-foot buses, as we start adding those articulated buses, which basically equivalent to two buses, begins to shrink our space, and so, we're probably going to have to redo the area where we use for our employee parking and push that to this new facility. Now, here's the area that I would like for everybody to get excited about, because I am totally, totally excited about it, and that is that we're looking, well, not looking, we've already started the demonstration or the pilot of Wi-Fi on 30 buses, and we're doing that with two carriers right now. We're assessing how well those carriers work in certain spots within the service area. We want to understand what are those dead spots are, and then, that'll help us make the best decision on which carrier we would go with. We're looking to outfit the rest of the fleet by the end of this month, and with Wi-Fi being available to all of our customers starting the first of the year. The next item we have is a, when I talk about giving our customers more confidence, and that is where we have developed a mobile app, where they can see where their next bus is and when it's going to arrive. The picture that you have before you shows a whole host of routes, but you can segregate that down to the particular route that you're looking for. So, you will be able to say, well, I'm on the Link 5. When is that next bus coming? If you can see that, it's two miles down the road. It gives you that comfort level that you can go into the 7-Eleven, grab a soda or a newspaper without the fear of missing your bus. And we're looking to have this rolled out right around the springtime of next year. The next item, the same thing, just like our fixed route, we want to have the same application for our paratransit users, as well as our NeighborLink services. The one good thing about with NeighborLink and with our paratransit service, the system will be designed such that it will notify the customer that their vehicle is en route. So, now, they don't have to be standing at the front door or outside waiting on their vehicle. They can start preparing themselves once they get that notification. Then, again, this is about improving the passengers' confidence in the system, because there's nothing worse than sitting there waiting and not knowing when that vehicle is going to come. And we're looking to roll that out in the fall as well. Excuse me, in the fr-, spring, I'm sorry. And then, lastly, from a technology standpoint, you can do all your banking, you can do all of your utility business on your phone, you can pay for Starbucks coffee and everything with your phone. So, this summer, we're looking to roll out where you can pay your fare with your telephone, with your cellphone. We're probably going to start this in stages where it starts off as a flash pass, and then, we will continue to upgrade the technology where it'll be a near-field communication device, where you could wave your phone in front of a weak reader. And also, with all of this technology that we're working on, we're making sure that we include our sister agencies such as CFX, Sun Rail, Volusia County, as well as Lake County, so they could all be a part of this. We cannot operate in a vacuum by ourselves. We have to make sure all the technology that we develop is extended to our sister agencies so we can work to have one system. While we may have different operating components, but the community needs to know that there is one system. And then, again, that gives them a little bit more confidence. And that ends my presentation. Are there any questions that you may have?
Questions or comments for Edward? Edward, very good presentation. Thank you for coming over. Would you just confirm for the public that Links and the city of Orlando continue to be in conversations and investigation relating to the use of limo lanes and bike lanes in parallel?
Yes, sir. In fact, we are working with Mr. Hattaway to set up a meeting so we can discuss exactly how we roll that out, and we will be presenting that back to, to our, to the Links Board of Directors, and I'm quite sure Mr. Hattaway will be presenting back to the city commission as well. Yes, sir.
Okay, I think the press got out a little ahead of us before we were able to finish that.
Yes, sir. And internally, we are working on how we share information, make sure that we have all the facts before we release any information.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Stewart?
Good, thank you. Ed, thank you very much, and I appreciate your help on the Rosemont. One of the challenges that we have at almost all locations is to make sure we increase ridership and do that with a safe environment, so I appreciate you and the work that you were doing there. Let me also commend you on the, on the electronic portion of it. I think it's been a barrier to many people, I know, that when you step on, you can't take cash, so you've got to get a, got to hit a card, and, which is all appropriate in terms of safety. So, I think that's, it's a great alternative. I'd love to kind of see how that goes in the next six months.
Yes, sir.
That's a lot of good stuff.
Yes, sir.
And then, I think the other thing, the mayor's right, that we have some issues on safety in the Links lane, and we just need to address that in a way that we, that we're providing maximum level of safety.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Welcome. This is, I guess, your official, first official meeting with us, I think, right?
Yes, sir, it is.
Let me give you a welcome from District 3, and thank you very much for the work that you've done and the energy you've brought back into the, to Links.
Yes, sir. Thank you so very much.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Johnson, great presentation. This is, these are exciting times, and as Commissioner Stewart said, the technological part of this is really exciting, and I'm really looking forward to it. Thank you also for the engagement with the Seminole Quarter in terms of that new study. I think exciting things are happening. The mayor has also been the forefront, forefront of this particular development and the staff, so we're excited to see what's going to happen here in the near future.
Yes, sir.
How long is this study? What do you foresee the study to be?
It's about 18-month process.
18-month, okay, that's not long. That's not long. And whatever happened to the electric buses?
Well, you know, I'm glad you brought that up, because I had meant, I wanted to mention about sustainability. We are working with Mr. Chris Castro of the city staff to look at so many different options that we can deploy, and so, we have a group, the name of the manufacturer slips my mind for some reason, but anyway, we're, they're-
Proterra.
Proterra, thank you, yes. Proterra's coming down, and they're going to give us a demonstration on their technology, and we want to work very closely with the city throughout all of Links' facilities on how we can make sure that we're in line with the direction of making Orlando more green.
Was that the one we tried about, about two years ago? A year and a half or two years ago?
I'm not sure.
Was that Chris? Okay.
Yeah, Commissioner, it was.
Chris, come up and talk into the mic, please.
Yeah, about two, about two and a half years ago, we tested a Proterra bus. Since then, NASA Kennedy Space Center has, is moving forward with acquiring about 40 of these buses as of the last month, and the range of the bus has now extended to about 300 miles per charge. So, what we're seeing is that battery technology is improving, the reliability of these electric buses are improving, and many other municipalities around the country are looking to convert their bus rapid transit fleets to all-electric. So, we're excited to be working with Ed and his team. We'll be testing out that bus on December 14th. This will be the second EV bus demo we've done in the last couple of months, and hopefully we'll do a pilot in early 2017 sometime to see how that works with our system.
I was on board in that bus last time, and that was exciting, because the gentleman was giving us a presentation, and little did we know that the bus was running. We thought it was, you know, so, all of a sudden, he tells us, "The bus is already running," and we're going like, "We thought it was, you know, it was off." But anyhow.
Zero emissions, no noise, they call it. Zero emission, no noise.
Looking forward to it, to that. And one more comment is about, I saw a bus that looks like the one that's going to be utilized for the BRT, yeah, BRT, and it has the Sun Rail on it. Is that, is that the plan?
Well, you know, we had a bus that was painted like this, and I, matter of fact, I thought about this this morning. I'm going to direct the staff to recreate that bus, because it's such a, it's a beautiful bus.
Yes, it is.
And I want to make sure that that stays in circulation, because we got, we have to continue to show that partnership between Links and Sun Rail, that we're one transportation solution for this community.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. It's great to have you as a CEO of Links.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Could we get a few more buses with John Morgan's picture on them? Commissioner Ayes?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. It's a pleasure seeing you this morning. I want to thank you for your update, and then, I guess, the question is, because so many different things are happening with Links, a lot of improvements that are going on, so how often can we get these updates with city council?
Well, certainly, I want to be able to brief each one of the commissioners on a quarterly basis, if possible, if you, if time is available, but I will work with Mr. Brooks and Mayor Dyer to come as much as you like for me to. I enjoy standing in front of you, and one of my goals was to make sure that you have an opportunity to hear from Links, other than when we're coming to ask for money at the end of the year, focusing on the next fiscal year. So, as much as you would like to hear from us, we're prepared to come.
And are you available for trips into District 6?
Oh, absolutely, sir.
To take a look at the routes, the deficiencies? Specifically, I'm kind of concerned about some of the trash receptacles that are at some stops, you know, they're just not big enough or whatever, and then, the trash overflows. And then, the aspect of having a trash receptacle, as well as maybe a recycling receptacle, because I think you do at some of the superstops have that.
That is correct, and we are going, looking through our capital improvement plan to see how we can deploy more of those. That was an initial study, looking at the cost-benefit, but we're going to get into a lot more detail on that, because if our system, the areas around our system is not clean, that gives us a bad connotation, a bad representation, and so, everybody gets to see that, and we don't want people to have a negative view of Links because of uncleanliness around our stops. So, that is an area of particular interest to me.
Yeah, and that same concept of inefficiency goes well with the shelters or a lack of shelters, or just not enough shelter there, and the placement of some of the shelters, especially as far as safety for the passengers and that kind of thing, keeping them out of inclement weather as much as you can.
Yes, sir.
Really, but, you know, do you have a study in place that you're looking at now for all of your shelters?
Yes, sir. That's going to be a part of our revamping of our capital improvement plan. In fact, our finance department said, "Ed, you've spent all of our money over the next 20 years already," but we know how important it is to bring our shelters back into repair, because in many of them, they have, may not have been painted in quite some time, and in some cases, we need to go with a different style of a shelter to give a little bit more protection from the inclement weather. So, we're looking at that, you know, in- So, we're looking at that, you know, in a much more deeper vein because, again, this is the image that we're showing the community that Link's, that people see that Link's is, and that's not the image that we want to set. We want to show them that we are a part of this community and we're adding value to the community.
Since coming from MARTA, have you looked at probably an elevated system of Link's traveling around Orlando or Central Florida?
Well, certainly, we have reached out to the Central Florida Expressway Authority to hopefully enter into a partnership where we can get dedicated lanes on the 408 east-west so that we can move people a lot faster from one side of town to the other. That's about as far as we've gotten at this point. But I think if we can really nurture that relationship, that really gets us a long way down the avenue to where we're even helping to feed even more people into the Sun Rail operations.
Okay. The Washington Shores Superstop, what's the current status of that? Are you getting ready for any improvements or anything?
Well, I think that improvement is fairly new. We may, and then I will go back, I will check with staff to see if we need to go back out and refresh the paint. But my understanding that that is fairly new, and that was done since I was in Atlanta.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I think we need to take a look at it again.
Yes, sir.
Please.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank you so much again for your presentation today, and it's really a joy and a pleasure to see you, so.
Yes, sir. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Gray, and then Commissioner Hill after that.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you so much. You talked about timeliness, reliability, which is great. Just curious, what's the industry standard and how do we compare?
The industry standard generally is somewhere between eighty and ninety percent because we understand that, you know, those buses are stuck in the same traffic as other cars that are because of accidents and car breakdowns and things of that nature. We are a little less than the eighty percent, and so, we're about at seventy percent. But we want to really get it up a lot higher.
Got it.
And, and part of that, sir, if I may, is that we have to conduct a in-depth analysis at least every three to five years to see how we're actually performing. We know what we're, how we're, how we're performing, but we've got to dig down to see what's causing that, what are the root causes, and then we make those corrections. And we are evaluated by the state government through the Florida Transportation Commission each year, and one of those areas is on-time performance. And they wanted to make some adjustments to those measurements that they have us to meet. But I had to share with them that in order for us to make these goals, periodically, we have to add another bus to those routes to keep the same standard that we had a year or two ago because there's more cars on the roads, sometimes we add more signalization, so that slows the vehicle up. So, we have to put additional resources, which means that there's additional cost associated with that.
What kind of tolerance do you get? Five minutes, ten minutes?
Well, we operate from a zero to five-minute tolerance.
Five minutes, you're late. If you're not there in five minutes, you're late.
Yeah, you know, after five minutes, you're late. But if you are there, if you leave that stop before it's scheduled, and that, to us, that's a worse sin than being late because if the vehicle has already gone down the road before it was scheduled to, that means that that person is not going to get that particular trip.
Just like the airlines, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hill?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ed, for coming out. Great presentation, and even previous to this, coming and giving me an update when you first entered this position. Only have one question, and also, I look forward to getting on the bus with you.
Yes, ma'am.
Riding through my district and identifying some of the things that are right and some of the things we can approve on. So, I look forward to doing that with that forward thinking. My question is, of course, you know, we're getting the new PS through eight school there, Paramore. And as I think about the kids that are further south of the free limo, are we in discussion of any sorts about maybe expanding that free limo so that the youth can take advantage of getting on that bus and getting to school on time? Because there's a few challenges with the kids on that south side getting to the school.
I, I am not familiar if we've had any discussions, but as soon as I get back to the office, we'll look right into that.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to see if we can talk about that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Edward, just a couple of things. The Sun Rail Saturdays, are we coordinating Link's service? There's a couple of buses I know that come from Kissimmee to Sand Lake Road that are primarily or solely related to Sun Rail. Are we making that trip?
No, sir, we are not. That is one of the things that I want to talk with Nakori about is how we can further expand transportation solutions on those days when Sun Rail is operating. So, you're correct, the service is coming out of Kissimmee, but then also looking at some east-west connectivity as well.
Yeah, because it would be helpful on those Saturdays that people don't have to drive up to, from Kissimmee to the Sand Lake Road.
That is correct.
I know that's a fairly well-used route, especially for the bowl games that are coming up.
Yes, you're absolutely right, sir.
Okay, and then, how is the coordination going between the airport, the Sand Lake Road Station to the airport? We'd had a few hiccups with that every once in a while.
Yeah, I think the conversations have been going on very well. We are getting back together, I think, within the next couple of weeks so I can get an update on where we are with it. But my last meeting with FDOT, things were looking pretty good at the time.
And the main thing on that was what you were just addressing is the bus pulling away just as the train is pulling up?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Stewart?
Mayor, let me, I guess probably it's generally related to, directed to you and to Ed together. But, you know, for ten or twelve years that I've been on here, we've been talking about trying to seek a better funding source, a more permanent funding source for Link's and for transportation as a whole in the community. When do we think is the right time to kind of address that? I mean, one of the challenges I have is that, at least I think, when you compare us to Phoenix or other areas, we have one-third the amount of buses, one-third the track, and we have, and I think we've got to figure out how we can move forward. I mean, the Vision 2030, all the things that you're doing now are things that I really would like to see us, if we're going to embrace this, we've got to embrace it in a way that, we've got to find that funding source.
It's a somewhat complicated question, Commissioner. We've looked at the rental car surcharge over the course of time and only were able to pass it out of the legislature one time, and I guess it was Governor Bush at that time vetoed it. And then, of course, we had Mobility 2020 back in 2003, which was unsuccessful. And just about all of the regional transportation surcharge initiatives that have come before the voters in the last several years have failed. It failed in Pinellas, failed in Hillsborough, failed in Polk.
Yes.
So, we need to come up with a strategy on how we can pass something like that and what it might look like. We are pursuing before the legislature a change to that statute that would allow cities over a certain size to also make use of that same thing because we have found that the urban cores, most of those have passed within the cities but have failed in the rural areas of the counties. And I think that's, I think that's true for Mobility 2020 that if you took Maitland, Winter Park, and the City of Orlando, it probably passed and didn't pass out in Christmas in West Orange County. So, we're pursuing that opportunity. And then, we're also looking at some multi-county type of things. And I think the time to do it is when we have the second phase of Sun Rail operational so that people will see the need for additional Sun Rail service and tie some of that service to additional funding for Link's as well.
Right. And Commissioner, if I may add, from a staff's perspective, we've got to be able to provide the Board of Directors as well as the various commissions, what does transit look like? And show the community what they would get for that benefit if they were to award a dedicated funding. But also, we need to be able to show the community who does not necessarily rely on transit, what does that mean for them? And along with doing a much more expansive visioning plan, we also want to do an economic impact analysis so people can understand what are the real benefits of Link's servicing this community. So, we're going to try to do all of those together, and we would like to be able to have a board retreat to talk about those very things.
Thank you very much, Ed. Okay, anybody else? Thank you very much, Edward.
Thank you, sir.
Happy holidays.
Thank you all very much, and happy holidays to you all as well.
This will close out our workshop with the Orlando City Council for December fifth, 2016. Thank you for attending or viewing us on Orange TV.